This conference will now be recorded.
Stace, we can't hear you. Excuse me, Mayor Coons, we are not able to hear you, excuse me.
Talk, because I don't need my camera, I just want to talk.
Testing, testing, can you hear us now? All right, thank you, Zach. I now will call to order the meeting of the Monmouth City Council for this Tuesday, July 6th, and we will have Phyllis Bowman call the roll, please. Counselor Belz, here. Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor McKeel.
Present.
Counselor Oberst.
Yes.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Here.
Mayor Coons.
I'm here.
And Counselor Oberst, if you'd lead us in the flag sweep, please.
Budge Legions, to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we will, and we do have several orders of business that we'll get to. We have a couple of public hearings. And so for our public comment tonight, if folks are here to speak about those issues, you can wait until that agenda item, and we will ask for comment at that time. Otherwise, we will accept public comment on items not on the agenda for public hearing. Those comments are limited to three minutes each, whether those comments are here in chambers or if someone has called in to the meeting, which doesn't look like we have our staff online. But we will consider those comments as well in, after our consent calendar. So at this time, we do have a consent calendar consisting of the minutes of the council meeting of June 15th. Unless there are any additions or corrections noted, we'll get those approved and move forward.
I move approval of the consent agenda, second.
Thank you, Counselor Carey and Counselor Oberst, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it looks like that carries, so thank you very much for those. So, and for public comment, Phyllis, did we have anyone either submit written comment?
We did not.
Or notify you they would like to speak to us remotely?
No, we did not.
And thank you. And I don't have any speakers cards here, other than one that is for the hearing item. So we'll wait for that. And begin our business agenda, which will be followed by our reports. And then brief council comments, and we do have executive session tonight. That will be to discuss two items, and I'll read the full script before we go into executive session. But we will be doing the performance evaluation of a public official or employee and discussing labor negotiations. So those will be our executive session items this evening. But we start off with several issues of interest to the public. And our first one, it looks like, is our community block grant funding. And Suzanne Duffner, our Community and Economic Development Director, will fill us in on this sort of typical order of business for us.
Yes.
And we do allow public comment for this as well.
Great, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. As the mayor mentioned, I'm here to introduce the public hearing to consider applying for community development block grants, grant funding for a housing rehabilitation program administered by Polk Community Development Corporation, Polk CDC. And so there's kind of three actions we're taking. One is to accept public comments on our notice of the city's intent to apply for this grant. And then, once that hearing's closed, we're looking for action from the council to direct staff to work with Polk CDC to prepare and submit a grant application for housing rehabilitation funds. And then also, we're a little bit of administrative direction, looking for council to appoint a certifying officer for the grant. So talk a little bit about that in the, in the staff report. But by way of background information, some of you may be familiar. It's kind of nice, we just had a presentation not too long ago from Polk CDC about their programs and their housing rehabilitation program in particular. Monmouth is part of a collaborative with Fall City, Independence, Dallas, and Polk CDC to apply for these community development block grant funds as they become available. And it provides, the program provides grant funding assistance for low to moderate income households to be able to make repairs to their, to their homes. So it's a great old program for eligible families in Polk County. The cities that are part of this collaborative, we all take turns in terms of being the grant applicant and sharing the, the work. So the last time Monmouth was the applicant was in 2011. And it's circled back around again, it's our turn. So Dallas, I think, was the last applicant. And there's really not a lot of work involved for the city. We primarily sign off on the application forms and various administrative documents. But Polk CDC really prepares the application and guides us through it. So they just can't be the primary recipient, they have to be the, they call it the subrecipient. And the city jurisdiction gets to be the, the primary applicant. So the, I mentioned the certifying officer was the other direction from council that we were looking for. This can be the highest elected official for the city, which would be the mayor, or someone appointed by the city council. And they will sign forms throughout the project, especially during the setup and the closeout of the grant. There's quite a bit of, with the federal grants, you can imagine paperwork to make sure we're following all the rules correctly. So staff is recommending that the city council appoint the city manager, just as a way of ease in terms of her being accessible for a timely review of those grant material requirements. But you're, you can still appoint the mayor as default, that would be who serves as the certifying officer. So I do have some alternatives there. You can direct staff to work with Polk CDC on the CDBG grant application and appoint the city manager as a certifying officer, or you can take no action. And in terms of financial applications, there's no direct cost to the city to serve as the grant applicant. There will be some staff time involved in helping prepare the documents. And I think that's about it. I did include some attachments in the staff report that explains a little bit more about the Polk Regional Collaborative Housing Rehabilitation Program. That was prepared by Polk CDC and a copy of the public hearing notice that we'll need to read into the record before we close the hearing. And then also a sample of the memorandum of understanding that we've used to enter into this housing rehabilitation program with Polk CDC and the other jurisdictions, just by way of some background information. So when you're ready for it, there is a proposed motion after you've taken testimony on the public hearing. And I believe Diana Satanovich with Polk CDC was going to join us, but I can't quite see the screen to see. It doesn't look like she was able to, to join us just yet. So I may need to read that public hearing statement when we're ready for it. If I can do that, or I can see if there's anybody that would like to testify. We didn't receive any written testimony as part of this.
All right, I will go ahead and open this hearing on the, on the city intent to apply for community development block grant funding from the federal government. And we will have you go ahead and read that notice, and then I'll see if there's any public comment.
Sounds good. Okay, so this is a public notice and notice of public hearing that was printed in the Idem and O'Neville Observer on June 23rd. Go ahead and read that now. City of Monmouth is eligible to apply for a 2021 Community Development Block Grant from Business Oregon. Community Development Block Grant Funds come from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The grants can be used for public facilities and housing improvements, primarily for persons with low and moderate incomes. Approximately 12 million will be awarded to Oregon non-metropolitan cities and counties in 2020. The maximum grant that a city or county can receive for housing improvement projects is 400,000. The city of Monmouth is preparing an application for a 2021 Community Development Block Grant from Business Oregon for a regional housing rehabilitation program that will provide grants to owner-occupied homes in Polk County for the purpose of housing rehabilitation. It is estimated that the proposed project will benefit at least 40 persons, of whom 100% will be low to moderate income. A public hearing is held by the Monmouth City Council tonight on June, July 6th at Volunteer Hall. Individuals are invited to attend and testify in person or by logging on to the virtual meeting. And individuals are also invited and welcome to submit written comments, of which I'd mentioned, we have not received any. Both oral and written comments will be considered by the Monmouth City Council in deciding whether to apply. The location of the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities, and we've asked folks to please contact us in advance for any accommodations. We have not had any special accommodations for this particular meeting. More information about the Oregon Community Development Block Grants, the proposed project, and records about Monmouth's past use of CDBG grant funds is available for public review at City Hall at 151 Main Street in Monmouth. During regular office hours, Monday through Friday, we just ask that advance notice be provided. If special accommodations are needed, we ask you please notify the city recorder, Phyllis Bowman, City Hall, so that the appropriate assistance can be provided. Permanent involuntary displacement of persons or businesses is not anticipated as a result of the proposed project. If displacement becomes necessary, alternatives will be examined to minimize the displacement and provide required reasonable benefits to those displaced. And that concludes the reading of the public notice.
Thank you, Suzanne. Is there anyone here who would like to provide public comment or testimony on our intent to apply for a community development block grant? Seeing none, and seeing no one new online, and having no other written comments provided, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions or comments for staff? Yes, Counselor Carey.
And Suzanne, you mentioned that we'd had a presentation from this group a while back. I've forgotten, you know, some of the things that they, they talked about. But one of the things that I remember asking and was concerned about is, what's the level of outreach? How do people access this opportunity? How do they get connected with the Polk CDC, or whatever the acronym is?
Uh huh. Yeah, so I think they use a multitude of different ways to, to reach out to various populations. One of which we just recently ran in the community notes, will put advertisement in our utility inserts to let folks know about that. They actually have waiting lists. There's a number of people that are seeking funds for this, and so they do get contacted regularly throughout the year, and they keep track of those individuals and then notify them when the actual grant funds become available. They have a good web presence, and they do outreach to various groups and service provider meetings to let folks know about that. So those are just kind of ones I remember off the top of my head. I'm sure there's more, and we'll, yeah.
Any, any sense of the size of the waiting list currently?
Um, I do not know. I wish Diana, these are perfect questions for Diana to be able to answer. I can certainly find out and let you know. It seems like they usually have around 10 to 12 folks at any given time that are, that are waiting for that. But I don't know most recently what those numbers are. And what that helps when you go to apply for the grant, to be able to show the need, demonstrate the need to the, the funding agencies that are making these awards, that there's interest and folks can take advantage of those.
You know, it strikes me that, that where we can and if we can be sort of, as a city, be aggressive on getting the word out to our residents that might benefit from that, from this, then the, then the better we could, you know, sort of reap the, the benefits of the, you know, the 12 million statewide and 400,000 countywide. That doesn't go a long way, but if we could get as many Monmouth interests involved with that.
Sure, sure.
And I'm sure there's a variety of ways to do that without adding anything more to your list. But if we could just have that as a, you know, perhaps an all-government awareness, that we could just pass this on to individuals directly, rather than the passive way that we did with the, and I saw that, and that's good.
Yeah.
If we could be a little laser-focused, it might.
Great, or just, I think sometimes the repetition of having announcements sometimes helps as well. Not everybody sees the first one, so I think you have to kind of keep at it. And maybe having a, yeah, more presence on social media. I don't think we've sent a lot of notices out through, like, say, Facebook and Nextdoor. So those would be other ways to reach folks as well. So, yeah, I think that's a really good point, to make sure that as many Monmouth households that are eligible could, could benefit from this.
And then finally, is there any, is it sort of a first come, first served on that waiting list? Or is there a prioritization method, you know, health and safety over cosmetic? Or, you know, is there any sort of a?
I'm not sure how that works. I'll need, yeah, it's a good question for Polk CDC on how they traditionally set these up. So I will find out, though, is there all really good questions? And can let you know how that works. This won't be the last time you see this. I mean, once we actually get, you know, our application ready to go, we'll keep you apprised of that as well, so.
The more of that that we have, the more targeted we could be, you know, when that opportunity comes.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's a good question.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for Suzanne? Counselor Oberst.
I assume that West Salem is not part of this, because it's part of Salem, not Polk County.
Right, they are part of a metropolitan area. Salem gets its own CDBG allotment, and they have a housing authority, so, yeah, they get their own thing going. Yeah, that would, yeah, see a lot of funds going, a lot more competition, right?
Because that would be major competition.
Yeah, great, no, no, just our smaller cities in Polk County. And I believe it's unincorporated, yeah.
Counselor McKeel.
This looks pretty straightforward, so I would just like to make the motion, if I may.
I'd like to second that, if I may.
Wait, let me read it first. I, I like queued it up here, okay, I found it. I move to direct city staff to work with Polk Community Development Corporation on a community development block grant application and appoint the city manager to act as the grant certifying officer. So you, Chris, oh, counselor.
Thank you, Counselor McKeel and Counselor Lopez. And do we need to do a roll call on this? I don't believe so. So we will, I will ask all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed, seeing none, please go ahead and let them know we will act as a fiscal sponsor and applicant for that grant. And we'll see you back here. And thank you, Marty, for serving as the grant manager, because I do that enough in real life, so I appreciate that. All right, at this time, we will be holding a public hearing on Street Vacation 21-01 to consider vacating an undeveloped portion of Alberta Avenue located between Sacred Lane and Powell Street East. The city council will make a final decision tonight based on the complete record, including the testimony received at a public hearing. Proceedings will be recorded. This hearing will be held in accordance with street vacation procedures required by the state of Oregon. For anyone wishing to speak, we ask that you submit a speaker card. And when called upon to speak, you must be recognized by the chair, state your name and address for the public record. So I will now open the public hearing for Street Vacation 21-01. And we have a staff report from Suzanne Duffner.
Yeah, and actually, I am going to turn the time over to our associate planner, Liz Pongress, to give the staff report. And I think she has a little PowerPoint presentation to share, so.
Yeah, I think I can ensure my screen, can everybody hear me? Okay? Okay. Hopefully, everyone can see the screen fairly well. I just have a quick presentation. So, as was mentioned, this is a quick petition for the Right of Way Vacation 2101 application. The request is to vacate a portion of the 60-foot wide Alberta Ave. The portion is located between Sacred Lane North and Powell Street East. This is an Oregon revised statutes, Chapter 271, has the criteria, and it will be a city council decision. The petition for this vacation was submitted by Larry Gretrick in May of 2021. The Oregon revised statute 271 requires a public hearing, and if approved, the vacation must be adopted by ordinance. Just to go over briefly, the street vacation application must meet criteria listed in Chapter 271. The city council may approve a street vacation upon determining the public interest will not be prejudiced by the vacation. And upon finding a written notice of objection from owners of a majority of the area affected. Prior to adopting an ordinance to approve the street vacation, the city recording officer must also verify all city land and all taxes have been paid on the lands covered by the platte or portion to be vacated. This map shows the Alberta Ave that would be vacated. Based upon a review of the current and planned street network, the extension of Alberta Ave through the subject parcel does not appear necessary. The adjacent parcels are largely developed with little to no redevelopment potential, and street connectivity to the west can be provided through Sacred Lane to Powell or Street, which connects to Pacific Ave. Connecting Alberta Ave of the subject property to Oregon North would provide further street connectivity to Monmouth Independence Highway. The city has not received any written notice of objection to the proposed street vacation. Monmouth Power and Light and Monmouth Public Works commented on the need for utility easements in the proposed street vacation areas to provide access to local utilities. The applicant agreed to a 60-foot utility easement over the proposed street vacation area. Staff recommendation is to approve the Right of Way Vacation 2101, subject to two conditions. Those conditions are, prior to first reading of an ordinance adopting the street vacation, the property owner shall provide legal descriptions for the area to be vacated, and the public utility easements needed to serve existing utilities located within the street vacation areas. As well as, the easements shall be reviewed and approved by Monmouth Power and Light and Monmouth Public Works Department prior to recording. The proposed motion is on page three of the staff report. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any clarification, and then we'll be able to ask questions of staff.
Yeah, no, thank you, Liz, for that great staff report. I just had one other comment that we did receive correspondence, an email from Paul Seber that went to, I believe, the city council on Tuesday, June 29th. It's just a short email, so I can go ahead and read that. It says, greetings, city councilors, in lieu of my in-person comments to the council presentation, I'm requesting a one-month rescheduling of the discussion of the vacation of properties cited in Vacation 2101 for two main reasons. The COVID-19 quarantine now declining has caused a massive, oop, just lost power in there for a second. Oh, no. Oh, it's gone for good. Phyllis, do you have a copy of that, or do you have access to his email on?
I don't have access to it.
Your email, just pull it up there.
I forwarded it to you guys.
I don't think I've seen it.
He cited concerns about access to, oh, you have it, oh, perfect.
Yes, so he, Dr. Seber, did have two questions in consideration of rescheduling the discussion. COVID-19 quarantine now declining has caused a massive disruption to access of publicly accessible information. An example of a simple vehicle transfer at DMV that took 27 weeks. Access to public personnel has been likewise difficult when there were questions. His second reason is there is more involved than simple vacation of publicly owned valuable assets. I'm questioning if council is aware of these possibilities. A rescheduling would allow for an open and complete discussion. So that was his comment, not necessarily about the issue, but about the timing. And certainly, we will now have an opportunity to ask many of those questions. So I will allow for staff comment, and then we'll have public testimony, or staff, questions of staff. Counselor Salinas Oliveros, and then Counselor McKeel.
Yeah, I have a, thank you, thank you, Mayor Coons. I have a few questions. And so my, my first question is, who pays for the easement, the water, the gas, the sewer? For any of that that has to go in, is that already there? So, so who pays for all of that? I, I read that the applicant will pay some of the fees, but wondering if that is already established? That's one of my questions. I don't know if anyone wants to answer that one, or we should continue.
Duffner has an answer for you.
Yeah, great question, counselor. So just to clarify, so the easement would be to cover the existing water, sewer, stormwater, and electric utility lines that are already in the area proposed for vacation. So the, the recording of the easement is the main cost, because the, the easement's legal description will cover the full 60 feet of the right-of-way that's being vacated. So normally, that would be the other cost, is the surveyor cost to prepare a written legal description. So in this case, we won't have that for the utility easement. We'll, we'll be getting that, as you could see from the recommended conditions for the ordinance. So that cost does get passed on to the applicant. And then there are just the recording fees at the county to make sure that those written easements stay with the property and run with the land. So those costs, I guess, the, the short answer is, those costs will get paid by the applicant.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you for that answer. My next question is about partitioning this, this easement. So I, I see that it's for yard space, was the reason that it was given. So is it going to be equitably partitioned, or is it just partitioned for the applicant? Like, how is that going to be distributed or partitioned?
Yeah, great question. So the, by Oregon statute, the Yeah, great question. So the by Oregon statute, the right-of-way, if it's approved for vacation, half of it goes to either side, either property owner. And then the applicant can work with the adjacent owner to do what's called like a lot line adjustment to acquire that other half. But they but they have to go through another survey land use application process to move that into their property. It doesn't just automatically happen. So yeah, by state law, it does get divided equally between the adjacent landowners.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. And is this going to be any loss of benefit for the city at all?
Well, you know, that's definitely the one of the main criteria for the decision on whether or not to approve this. I don't believe that it will be a loss to the city as long as we can secure those public utility easements. The right-of-way, there are developed roads that provide east-west connectivity on either side of the block that are really close proximity. And I don't believe it will, you know, violate our transportation system plan to to vacate the small stretch, the small portion. Usually, it's development that pays for building new streets and roads. Cities don't barely, as you are aware, we barely have money to maintain, right, the ones that we have. So the likelihood of us finding funds to to pave and create a new street are pretty unlikely. So again, I think our public interest is in those protecting those utility easements. And the comments that we've received back from Monmouth Power and Light and Monmouth Public Works, we can protect those through.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor McKeel.
Actually, Counselor Salinas Oliveros has had my question about how it is, how it'd be divvied up. I was, I drove over there today and I I thought I saw that an address, one of the affected properties wasn't on the petition list, but maybe I have the home number incorrect. So I was quickly going to a Google map here. I thought it was 380. So 314 is the person who made the application and I thought I saw 380 was a home. But I I should have made a note when I was looking out there today. But but because it looks like in the petition that it says all the affected properties right around that are on that petition. But.
So just to clarify. Oh, sorry.
So no, so if you if you if you are familiar with the property number, otherwise, just forget it. I probably just incorrectly remembered a house number.
So to clarify your question, Counselor McKeel, are, were you concerned that there was a directly adjacent property owner that was directly adjacent to this Airbnb that hadn't signed it or just one in the notification and the larger notification area?
No, no, your first statement, that somebody right directly who would be directly impacted by this had not signed it. But I think I probably just remembered the number incorrectly.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to clarify. So the property owner is directly adjacent to the area being vacated. So that would be Larry Gretrick and the property owner on the east side of, and I'm forgetting the the name. Both of those would have to sign. So it's my understanding that that the applicant has obtained their signature. And actually, they're here tonight. They'll be able to testify and maybe clarify that. But, you know, if we're not able to confirm that, then we can always continue the hearing and we can do some more research on that and come back before you make a decision on that.
Thank you.
Other questions before we invite testimony? Counselor Oberst?
So a few years back, a large two-story house went in on, I guess, 701, which has a gravel driveway to this day. See two shaded areas on our map that look like they're part of 701, maybe. It's not really clear. There's notations about an old line and a new line and so on. And just that particular part of this isn't clear to me how that all shakes out. And the unpaid driveway has, you know, been staring me in the face for a decade now. And then, so I'm curious about that. I'm also, I want to clarify, you said, basically, it's shared. When, if we were to abandon this, the property would be shared between adjacent property owners. So is it draw a line down the middle of the easement and it goes to whoever abuts it on either side?
That's correct, upon immediate vacation, and then they can adjust it through a lot line adjustment.
So we'd be roughly doubling the property of Lot 300 and adding on to 400, 500, 701.
I don't know if it would double 300, but it would.
It's close. I mean, just that's eyeball. Yeah. When you consider the piece of it to the north in addition to what's to the east, it's it's pretty significant. And, you know, I just, I think one of the things that bothers me, and I don't know that this land has value to the city, but it has value. And, you know, even though this will result in presumably higher property taxes for the properties in question. I wonder how many years it takes for the city to recover the value of that easement. I'm just, these are just things that have been playing in my head that I've been trying to understand how this is in the city's interest to just walk away from this. So that's kind of where I, if you have any comments on any of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Chain of thought, if I worked up one good link, I guess.
Sure. So regarding the the benefit or the value to the landowner when the city vacates it. There, there is a process for charging like a special assessment or benefit to the property owner and having an exchange of monies for for providing that right-of-way. It's looking at past examples of when the city is vacated right-of-way, and most recent one was on the S-curves. That wasn't our practice. We didn't do that. Again, that was was encumbered by easements, so it wasn't like it was adding buildable area for for being able to place a building in it. And the similar thing would happen in this case that they can't, because of that 60-foot wide easement that would replace the right-of-way. They won't be able to construct in there. So they do get a value of, you know, being able to have more yard demo and taxes, I guess, to pay on that. But yeah, there's there's no additional building footprint that would in that new vacated area. So but it is council prerogative to explore that special assessment fee. I mean, it's not a huge area that's being vacated. It's usually have to, you know, calculate something based on the the market value of the unimproved land to come up with a formula for that. But it just, it's my understanding, it hasn't really been the recent practice to to do that. Not that it can't change, but yeah.
And can you speak to the crosshatched areas on the map and the lack of a paved driveway for
Yeah, so the crosshatched areas were part of a land lot line adjustment that was recently completed to make sure that the structure on, I believe it's 701, was on its own parcel and met setback requirements. So even though they're under the same ownership or trying to clean up some of those lot lines, there is an existing gravel driveway there. You know, street vacation, that's not really one of the criteria to require the the owner to improve that. Certainly, any new driveway would would need to be a paved driveway to meet our standards.
And I would just note, obviously, when we vacate a street, we also vacate the responsibility to maintain it, should it need maintenance. So not that this was a highly improved street that was getting enough traffic that we'd have to do work. But Mr. Cooper will no longer have to maintain it. So there's a little bit of a savings. Counselor Carey.
You know, I really don't see any utility in in the city maintaining this and keeping it. I'm, I mean, why it was ever conceived in that way in the beginning is beyond me.
Work was going to go through the S-curve, John.
Well, it created a new S-curve.
Right.
Which which doesn't make any sense. And 701, in my opinion, has been a mess from the beginning. But unless I look backward on that, because that is what it is, and I'll have to work out. You know, once ownership is determined, then it'll be easier to to get that mess cleaned up as as it is. So, you know, and and I'll be interested to hear the the testimony. But, you know, I don't see any reason for us not moving on this tonight. I don't, I think the questions that were asked earlier were ones that I had and have been resolved. And and so I'm hoping we can move this thing forward if we have testimony that's supportive of that.
All right. Counselor Lopez, is your question of staff or do you want to wait till after the testimony?
Um, yes, my question, my question is of staff. Just to just to certify the the statements that are handwritten on the, oh goodness, on on the application that all owners of adjoining properties sign the petition and over two-thirds of affected areas, that's that surrounding area of, I believe it was 200 feet, had signed, is that, I didn't do the math. Has somebody double-checked that? Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's part of the staff review for complete on that. So and then I think we're trying to clarify, there was a concern about an address that might have been missing from Counselor McKeel. So hopefully, the applicant will be able to respond to that one.
Great. Thank you, Chris. We do have a comment on this. And so Larry Gretrick, if you'd like to come to the microphone, introduce yourself and state your residence for the record.
My name is Larry Gretrick. I live at 347 Craven Street North in Monmouth, Oregon. This property abuts my backyard. And the question on the 380, that is part of Lot 701. I own that one as well. So I've signed for both properties. I think the things that I would have addressed have already been addressed here. I've been in in contact with North Star Surveying and am prepared to hire them to do the necessary survey and write up the easement. So I understand the property can never be built on and I don't want it to be the six, all 60 feet of it will be accessible by the public works. I've lived there for 32 years and I think they've only been in there about five or six times in all of those years. So I don't think that's a big, big issue. And I don't know if anybody has any questions of me.
When you, should that be, and when it is, is vacated, have you been in contact with the, you know, with your neighbors in terms of determining how those, you know, that
Yes.
Probably will be will be a portion.
Yes, Lot 300 is owned by Jeremy and Suzanne Sykes. They're here tonight. And Wade and Carol Ryerden are the other ones and they're they're on vacation right now, but they've signed it and are in favor of it.
So you've been in contact with your neighbors and you guys will work out an amicable agreement on who gets what?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions of Mr. Gretrick? Yes, Counselor Belts.
I just want to make sure I understand the motivation for doing it. It's just to clean up this little bit of land that's behind your property or next to your property. The city has owned it. We've done nothing with it. You're just trying to clean it up and make it part of your yard. I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah, actually, I've I've been using it as part of my yard for all of these years. So I've kind of felt like it's fair that I start paying taxes on it. It's
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Okay. Right.
And do you have plans to pave that driveway?
I haven't given that a great deal of consideration. I did at one time and I couldn't because it was part of the city. So I talked to Public Works about that and we would have had to completely redo. I already paid for that sidewalk and the approach, the apron there years ago when we built on Lot 701. And I was going to have to tear that all up and put in curbs, the full 60-foot width, if I wanted to pave that. So I said, no, let's just leave it the way it is. I didn't really want to develop it any further. In fact, that was kind of the the push to start this process was because of that.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Gretrick? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And are there, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Go ahead, Jeremy. You can state your name and residence for the
My name is Jeremy Syke and I live at 314 Sacred Lane North, here in Monmouth. And my lot busts up against the considered property. I think just to, you know, speak, I'm in full support of making this happen. And I think the main concern for my wife and I who own the the property next to it is just one of liability. I think it's been, there's vagueness around what is that space and how is it to be used, which causes young kids to wander through it and then onto my property and across lines that I think would become a liability. Where does somebody, I mean, there's a tree there that people love to climb and because, you know, because of the vagueness of that property. I'd love to see it split up and then it's it's obvious who it belongs to. We can place signs out. And we don't have the the kids wandering back and possibly getting hurt and under my insurance and also something to consider.
Any questions for Mr. Syke? Yes, Counselor Belts.
Actually, I just want to make a comment. I owned a piece of property at one time in California. And the way in which it was fenced, it used to be an open space. And then it was fenced before I bought it. And kids would jump into my backyard and then jump over the fence to a little strip mall behind my house. So just fair warning, if you do decide to fence it, make sure that you make it clear that it's posted that it is now private property.
Absolutely.
Because it was it was a liability for me. They broke my window and all kinds of things.
Right.
Just warning.
Yeah. And there's, I have no intention of, I think, fencing it. I think it's just more of a clarity scenario and an understanding of, hey, this is private property and you can't wander through it any any longer. And then the other thing is, were that to ever become a road, it would make my home into an island, which is a major concern for for my property as well.
And you're on the corner, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Powell and Sacred.
You're doing nice things with that, please.
Thank you. Yeah, we are living out a great legacy there, Jim Smith.
Yeah.
It's an honor to get to hold that property for sure.
Yeah, that's amazing. All right, other questions for Mr. Syke? Right, thanks, Jeremy. And at this point, unless counselors have further questions of staff, I will close the hearing. Hearing is closed. And so comments, concerns, or there is a motion in our packet if folks would like to move forward with that. Counselor McKeel.
So we do have this request to put off our decision for a month, but there seem to be no concrete reasons involved with that request. So if anybody has information, maybe I just missed something.
Yeah, a great observation. I think obviously, we have been taking public testimony throughout the last 16, 17 months. Certainly no interruption there. And I know our staff is in constant contact with and communication with community members. So I'm not sure where those comments came from. And certainly, this does not particularly affect the property of the person who commented, to my knowledge. So I think it was just more of a general statement about public assets. And so unless anyone has questions or concerns about that, which
Could be an unnecessary delay.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't see this person's name on this petition either. So I was
Paul is there. He's on the corner of Sacred and Church. So he is within the 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 area of folks affected 200 feet or whatever it is.
She asked if he signed a petition. She asked if he signed a petition.
Yeah. Yeah, he did. He said.
Well, and we don't, we're only two thirds of the affected area, so not every single property owner is required to sign.
He did, he did sign. Sorry, go by. I was looking at it.
To focus the discussion, Madam Mayor, I'm going to move that the council approve right away vacation 21-01, subject to the conditions recommended by staff.
And I will second.
Thank you, Counselor Carey and Counselor Belts. And any additional discussion? Thank you, Benwell. As for the roll call, please fill us. We don't need a roll call. Oh, this is
Or, or later.
All right, all in favor of moving this forward, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, and any opposed? All right, thank you, and we will give an ordinance. Staff, please bring that back to us.
Great, we'll have that once we have the legal description prepared, so probably August, meaning
August. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your testimony.
And thank you for coming in. We appreciate it.
That was very helpful, actually, that, that, the first individual knew the address, so thank you for that. And thank you for watering the grass, by the way. They've been maintaining this property very well.
He's gone. He can't hear you. All right. So at this point, we do have our Traffic Safety Commission report, and Russ Cooper is here to talk about the work of the Traffic Safety Commission. I don't see any commissioners joining us, but
Counsel liaison.
Counsel liaison is here, and I'm sure will amplify any needed.
The other staff members here.
I know, and, yes, I was just going to mention that Public Works Director Russ Cooper will be reporting, and Chief Isaiah Haynes is sitting in the back on this one, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. You have highlighted one of the comments that I would like to make, that the commission is, has one citizen staff member, or one citizen member at this time. We have two vacancies, two citizen vacancies, so we're looking forward to reaching out to the community to try to find other folks who can serve on that. The citizen member that we do have is Mike Kissel. He's a, worked for Polk County Fire District and was uncertain that he would be able to be here to give this presentation, so I
Been a busy afternoon.
It has been a busy afternoon.
Unfortunately.
Yes. And then, yes, Counselor Oberst is our, our council liaison this year, and he can fill in anything maybe I forget to cover as we through, move through this, but with our accomplishments from last year, I'll kind of start now and go, go back into the year. And so even one of the items that we discussed at our last meeting is on the agenda today, and that's a, a request from a, a citizen for a stretch of no parking on Madrona. There, there were some concerns about congestion at that intersection when you get vehicles parked on both sides. And so the Traffic Safety Commission met, discussed that, came up with a recommendation for council, and so you'll see that as one of your agenda items tonight. Another item that we've been moving forward, if you, you may recall, last year we talked about a speed study on the south end of, of high, city limits on Highway 99. So we're moving that forward now. That got delayed. ODOT asked that, they actually denied our request for a speed study, asked that we allow the, the highway improvement project to get wrapped up, allow traffic to get back to its, its normal unaffected flow, and then go ahead and resubmit that request for a speed study there. So that request is in ODOT. The idea is just to slow traffic down before it gets to Gwynne Street, because we have a lot more traffic that's pulling off of Gwynne Street on the Highway 99. Another item that the commission worked on this year is Chariots was looking to expand their Route 45, and, and so we worked with them on kind of reviewing the proposed locations for bus stops and expand, you know, no parking zones to, to see if there were, if the Traffic Safety Commission had any requests or comments with regard to those locations. Another item that we worked on was, we got a request from a citizen on West Main who was, seemed to be the preferred turnaround zone for folks who had missed the, the left turn onto Whitman to go to Fall City, or Kings Valley Highway, or Valley of the Giants, or wherever they were heading. And, and they were kind of, the request was, is there anything that we can do? And upon reviewing the situation, it was clear that two things had taken place. The, the larger sign with larger text that had been there previously had aged and was replaced with a sign that had smaller text, and then was slightly moved away from the intersection, I guess we'll call it. And, and that in combination with a walnut tree on the corner that had grown, the sign was clearly obscured. So by trimming the, the walnut tree, made visibility, and that, that was the, the solution to that particular problem. And then we had started the year with update, an update on two of the projects that had wrapped up right at the tail end of last year, and that was the installation of three display, speed display signs at the entrances into Monmouth on our county roads. And then the other was just an update on the installation of the sharrows in the downtown corridor. So two great projects that I think have had some positive impact goals for this year. And with this, I'll kind of start with now and, and move as we go into the year, what we see, what we'll be doing. The, the city public works just initiated or kicked off our Highway 99 bicycle pedestrian corridor connections study. That's going to be a, a citizen engaged, stakeholder engaged process where we look at Highway 99 from the, the lens of pedestrians and bicycle users to see if there's ways that we can make it more usable, we can improve safety, and in, in the end, identify a, a list of projects to that end. And, and with that, the, the study itself will provide us a list of potential grant funding opportunities associated with each of those recommended, recommended projects. So that's what the study is about. The Traffic Safety Commission will be one of the key stakeholder groups. City Council will be one of the key stakeholder groups. We've reached out to some bicycle groups, Western Oregon University. So we'll have a lot of folks involved in it, and then it will result in a, a webpage where citizens can go to, to get more information. We'll have it on social media, you know, trying to bring light to the study and get people involved in it. So I'm looking forward to that. The next thing that the Traffic Safety Commission will be monitoring is, is as development at the Hoffman Estates subdivision takes place, and we start getting more residents that are living in there, and we'll, we'll engage Polk County on a traffic speed study along Hoffman in, in proximity to that entrance into that subdivision for getting that traffic slowed down as you're coming from the west approaching it. And it'll, I think it'll also impact westbound traffic, but we're mainly trying to slow down the eastbound traffic as they approach that intersection. So it's Polk County Road, they'll be the, the jurisdiction that initiates that with ODOT, and so with Traffic Safety Commission's help, we'll, we'll pick the right time to pull the trigger on that and, and get that study moving forward. Another thing that the, the commission will look at is consider the placement of one of those speed signs on Talmage Road. Again, it's a, it's a county road, but the county has, you know, has said that they would support a, a speed sign on there if the city pays for it and maintains it. So we'll, we'll take that to the, the commission, get a feel from them, and then we'll move forward with something like that, if that's their recommendation. Two other things, you know, we'll, the, we currently have a Safe Routes to School project planning grant. It's, it's been delayed because of difficulty in doing public outreach, but the Traffic Safety Commission will be involved in looking at those projects and those recommendations and, and try to provide feedback to that process. And then, as we do any other year, we'll continue to be responsive to citizen concerns as they bring them up, and we'll identify those and either bring recommendations to council or take action, so. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or remind you that we're down two citizen members.
Yes, we heard that we are down two citizens, two residents on the Traffic Safety Commission. A great commission to get involved in. You meet quarterly and really get an opportunity to, you know, hear the, the concerns of folks and, and fix them. It's, that's kind of fun when you can do that. Our attorney, Lane Shutterly, has joined us, and Lane had a comment. Go ahead.
I think, no, I was mostly just wanting to signal to Teresa that I was on the call so she could switch over to the Dallas Council meeting, so good to see you all.
The switcheroo, the attorney switcheroo.
This would be hard to
Right. Questions or comments about the traffic safety projects? Counselor Carey?
Speed signs, you referenced those. Are those, just the static signs, are those the ones that give you a report of, you know, the, the posted speed and then your actual speed?
So, so the, the traffic signs, the speed signs that we installed, they do two things. One is they, they illuminate, flash, carry on, let, let motorists know exactly how fast they're going, but they also do collect data, and we have access to the data for a number of vehicles as well as the speed that they're traveling.
Great. I, I was hoping that's what that was. And again, just to be brief about this, you know, as you're working on putting constituency groups together for the 99 corridor, bike ped door, another group you might reach out to is the, is the disabled community. You know, that, that sort of, those crosswalks are a bit wider now than they once were, and, and there's a fair few people that go across, you know, back and forth, and that, that might be some insight that would be helpful.
Yeah, excellent. One of the, one of the stakeholder groups is a, a group, the site and hearing, and up at Western Oregon University, they're one of our, our key stakeholders, and then we have a citizen who is in a wheelchair that is involved on the
Okay, well, so you sound like you haven't covered. The, the, you know, when you begin that, that traffic speed study coming in from the south, I mean, I'm hoping that that, and part of that might find our way, provide data to support a flashing lights on that end and reorganizing the crosswalk on that end of Madrona. And, you know, now that we have that to the, so I want to focus a little bit on the north, because we're doing yeoman work on the south. But the north, two problems with that. One, and thank goodness, we have the, the little pylons there and that, you know, that, I guess, thank goodness, people don't, some of them don't like it, some of them love it. But that would create a space for a, what do they call them, rescue islands, or, you know, those halfway across
Refuge.
Refuge islands. So, so we've got that, and there's no turn conflict like there is on the other end. So when we get to that, you know, that's one of the things that, that I hope we can, we can find. And then regarding the traffic coming in from the north, it comes fast equally, and beginning about 3:00 in the morning, log trucks start rolling through, and they're going too fast. And, you know, they use their air brakes to dog that down, and Isaiah has heard me bitch about this for a long time, and he does too.
Chief heard before that.
And chief heard before that. But, but, and, you know, we've got some people that, that live right there on Myrtle that, that do as well, so.
The apartments on the other side.
The, the degree to which a, a speed study would help provide a little teeth to whatever we'll do about that, I think that, i- it would be valuable on that end. And, and honestly, the, the trucks, the log trucks primarily are the problem. They're loaded going south. You know, they're not loaded going north. And so, you know, there, as they're coming that way, that's when they're hitting their brakes. And so if it's a speed issue, maybe it's not, but it's a speed issue, we could find that out, and that would help with the data. So a north entrance speed study would be helpful, in my opinion.
Okay. With regard to the, the crosswalks, those are certainly going to be one of the, the key projects that we look at in the, the 99 connection study as well, so.
Counsel Oberst, any comments?
And I think, just to double back on those crosswalks, I think they're both primed for RFBs, I know. The Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon, sorry, I just acronym. I'd know the one at Madrona is a tough sell to ODOT, but if we can do something about rearranging that crosswalk, it's helpful. I've noticed that already some of those candlesticks have been knocked loose. I saw the base of one of them. The bolt has been pulled out of the pavement already. I think that, while they made them, that passage big enough for trucks, they forgot about farm equipment. And they may need to put ones that are hinged, you know, flexi at the bottom or something, just passing that observation along. You've mentioned to, at our meetings, the Safe Routes to School, that we're applying for a grant there, and you didn't really speak to that. Wondered if you could fill us in on that piece a little bit. I know it got delayed because nobody was in school this year.
Yeah, so, so we, we, we do have the grant and the project as far as the public outreach has been delayed until the fall to, to when we can get better public outreach and, and from the, kind of through the, I'll say it, through the school district, but public outreach through the school.
And that's infrastructure grant, correct?
Yeah.
The one, the grant we got is planning.
Oh, it's a planning grant, excuse me. Project planning, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
But, but what it will, what it will position us for is, is those projects will already have been sampled by ODOT and, and Safe Routes to School program, and should be eligible for the, the capital grant money, project money.
And, and the three county roads that come in with flashing speed signs are?
Riddle Road or Monmouth Avenue, Church Street, and Helms Road, Warren Street.
And is there any chance of getting one on the highway coming in for Fall City? That's up to ODOT, I assume.
We haven't, we haven't approached that because it is a, a state highway, that's correct.
Okay. Maybe we'd have somebody out there holding that sign.
Are there any other questions?
Along those, just, I will say that ODOT was responsive to some concerns about traffic coming in from the west on Whitman, and they moved their speed signs and, and placed an additional speed sign on that stretch of roadway to, to help alleviate some of those concerns.
Well, if those speed signs are as closely placed as the new ones on Gwynne Street East, between Talmage and Martin, the people will notice them. So, thank you very much, Russ. Appreciate that report and update, and again, a busy time for that commission, but important work, keeping things safe in our community. We'll move to our next item of business, which actually also includes the word ODOT, so I assume that's why Mr. Cooper is staying here with us, to talk about a fund exchange program agreement.
Thank you, yes. So this works, this item is an IGA between the City of Monmouth and the Oregon Department of Transportation. It allows the city to access federal surface transportation block grant funds that are sent down to the state. The state threw an agreement with the League of Oregon Cities and Counties, came up with a, a calculation for distributing that out to the cities. So the City of Monmouth has a, a money that is through that. What this agreement allows us to do is to Money that is through that, what this agreement allows us to do is to. To access those dollars, those federal dollars without having to meet federal requirements on our project, so it's a benefit to the city. The, the Oregon Department of Transportation. Takes a, a small management fee, I'll call it, for managing those funds. Currently, that's six cents for, for each dollar in, in twenty-twenty-two, that goes up to ten cents for each dollar. Requested. The, these dollars are only for transportation improvement projects, that it's not intended for. Operations and maintenance, although projects like crack ceiling or chip ceiling. Can be considered for this. ODOT has simplified their process significantly. You, it used to be that you'd have to do one of these IGAs for every single project, now they've set it up so that. We will do this one IGA, it's good through, I think it's September of twenty-twenty-four. At that time, we'll need to do another, another IGA, so that has, that has made the process much more streamlined. And so each time that we have a project that we need to access these dollars, the city prepares a. A request letter, sends it to ODOT and, and then there's, you know, the, the project moves forward. Let's see, so the, the intent of the city this year is, is we would like to access. Five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of the federal money. To pay for overlay of Sixteenth Street, Eccle Street and Gwynne Street. These are two projects that we budgeted for in this, in this current fiscal year, and so. With that, and then. The, the. Hope is that you will authorize the, the city manager to, to enter into this agreement, sign on behalf of the city for this agreement. So I'd be happy to answer any questions with regard to the, the IGA that I can or the project.
Okay, so questions about the intergovernmental agreement, not the Independent Grocers Association. Regarding the exchange of federal funds for some of our priority projects, so Counselor McKeel and Counselor Obers.
Oh, well, I was going to ask about the price of bananas, but maybe I should not talk about streets instead. So this section of Gwynne, is that the unpaved section? That is, well, I can't give you an address, sorry.
Actually, thank you for asking that question, because it, it highlights an error in my staff report, it's not Gwynne Street, it's Madrona Street. Which is the stretch between, say, Highway ninety-nine and Eccle Street, right there by Dairy Queen. That's what it should be, Madrona Street, not Gwynne Street, thank you.
So, can I ask then, why there's that section of Gwynne that is east of. No, sorry, it's a couple of blocks east of Eccles that is all gravel?
West of Warren.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, west.
We'll chat, we'll tell you that story at another, another time.
Yeah, I'd be happy to bring that, that stretch of roadway back to council for a discussion at a later time, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I am glad to see Eccles just while I've got the fort, because it's like I drove down it the other day and went, wow, is this bad? And then here you are, Russell, I'm Mr. Cooper, sorry, right before I can say anything, so thank you.
Counselor Obers.
I think I know generally the answer, but why are we only getting ninety cents on the dollar? You know, how does ODOT justify a dime on, on the dollar, I guess is my question, how, why did it change from six cents to ten cents?
I don't have the answer to that, yeah.
Good enough.
Other questions? Or comments? And there is a motion in our packet?
I would move that Monmouth City Council authorized city manager line to proceed with signing intergovernmental agreement thirty-five-one forty-five. Between the city of Monmouth and Oregon Department of Transportation.
A second.
Thank you, Counselor Obers, and Counselor Salinas Oliveros, and all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed, hearing none, we will move forward with getting that federal money transferred down to those of us who could really use it.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we're going to try and power through a couple more of these items before we take a break. If that's, if I have your leave, this evening, we have another public hearing, this is on legislative amendment twenty-one dash zero-one. To consider amendment of the Monmouth zoning ordinance, revision of side yard setback standards in the low-density residential zone. The city council will make a final decision based on the complete record, including any testimony received at tonight's public hearing. These proceedings are being recorded, and the hearing will be held in accordance with the land use procedures required by the city and the state of Oregon. This is a type four legislative procedure. For anyone wishing to speak, and we have no one here in the room. So we will find out if there was any written or submitted testimony. Before we begin, does counselor wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest in this matter, anyone? Seeing no conflict of interest, I will move forward and open the hearing in this matter. Go ahead and start with our staff report on the public hearing for legislative amendment one-one-oh-one. Zoning ordinance amendment, revision of side yard setback requirements.
Great, thank you, Mayor, I'll just be brief in my staff report presentation, since you've seen this a couple of times before. And it's also gone to the planning commission, so you have before you tonight's request to consider. Amending our zoning ordinance to reduce the side yard setback requirements from fifteen feet to ten feet. In the low-density residential zone, the council did. Consider whether or not to initiate this on April twentieth and decided to initiate it after receiving positive feedback from the planning commission. Since that time, the planning commission has actually had a work session on it, took a look at what side yard setbacks. Are in other city codes, it looked at about nine or ten other small cities in Oregon to kind of get a feel for. What their side yard setbacks requirements are, and a majority of those do have a ten-foot. Side yard setback requirement, five on, five foot minimum on each side. They also looked at some information from the Oregon Smart Development Code Handbook that encourages minimal setbacks to. Make the most efficient use of land and prevent further barriers from the development of accessory dwelling units, so. They had a public hearing, the planning commission, on June sixteenth, and at the conclusion of that, they did recommend that the council. Adopt legislative amendment twenty-one dash oh-one to reduce the side yard setback requirements. We haven't received any further testimony from the initial request from Larry Dalton at the Hoffman Estates subdivision. Although we've certainly been in correspondence with several builders who. Are starting to file their building permits for Hoffman Estates and wondering when this will take effect and wondering if there's any way to. Expedite the adoption of the ordinance and make it become effective sooner, so. While you don't have that in writing, that has been an oral request from several builders, so you may want to consider. Some ways you may do that by combining first and second reading to, to make it effective a little bit sooner, so, pretty straightforward, just. Maybe one of the smallest code amendments that I have brought to council. There's a copy of the attached language, attachment one, and sample motion when you're ready for it, and happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Okay, any questions of staff? We have discussed this a couple of times, and Counselor McKeel.
I have to apologize for my ignorance, when it says legislative amendment twenty-one zero-one. Is that from the state of Oregon or is that from our own council?
That would be from our own city file number, the local file number that we assign, so it just means it's our first legislative amendment that we've done of this calendar year.
It, it looks so official, I had to, had to check, so thank you.
Yeah, we do report that number to the state, but no, we assign that number.
We, we, we get to serve sometimes as legislate, the legislative branch, and sometimes as the quasi judicial branch, so. This is one of our legislative activities as a council.
They never let us be administrative, though.
And sometimes we're administrative, we get to do it all. Any other questions of staff?
Just that, you, you referenced, if, if we could move this more quickly, there's been really very little discussion about it, no opposition to any of this. What would this, what would the procedure be for expediting, this is a first reading, could we then?
This isn't the first reading of the ordinance, this is actually our hearing, and then we will deliberate and decide, and Lane will explain that to you.
Okay. The council is of mind to do it, we can clear an ordinance for your next meeting. And as long as it's a unanimous vote, we can have first reading and second reading done in one meeting. And we can add an emergency clause that would make it effective, really, the, the date of your next meeting, as long as there's unanimous approval by the council, we can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Shutterly. If there are no other questions of staff and hearing that we have received no public testimony and we have no one in the room. I will now close this hearing. And move forward, as the staff report mentions, there is a motion or some alternatives for your consideration.
Could I?
Counselor Obers.
Make a comment if I could. The, the, the current standard of fifteen feet in, in aggregate, five foot minimum, so in other words, anything from. Five and ten to seven and a half and seven and a half on either side of the house, was done very deliberately at a time when I was chair of the planning commission. In an attempt to give folks a little bit more elbow room, that said. It's also become very obvious that their desire for ever greater density in Oregon is breathing down our neck and. I don't personally, I don't know how to say this exactly, I'm in favor of doing this, but I wish we weren't. Because I think this current standard actually serves us very well. I, I recognize inevitability when it's staring me in the face, so.
As someone who lives within five feet of my neighbor's dining room, and I, we get along perfectly well with that, so. I think it's a great option for folks who would like to have it. Other. Comments, again, then we do have. A staff report explaining our next steps.
So we talk a motion.
Yes, please.
I move to approve legislative amendment twenty-one dash zero-one and direct staff prepare an ordinance to adopt the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Terry and Counselor Belts. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed, seeing none.
Hi.
We, Carol McKeel, opposed. Let's record that. Do, do, did you want to make a comment to that, Carol?
Yeah, thank you, I, I'm sorry, I missed the comment section of that, I didn't speak up quickly enough. I, I actually, I, I've just been really struggling with this, as I don't even live five feet from my neighbor, but. But not too far away, and I feel. That. I also, my family lived in Gary, Indiana, where they had those tenement houses that you could reach out and touch the other house, and. I, I just, I think that we need to keep the, the longer distance, I, I just don't like this five-foot thing and. I hate to rush through this, because I think, once you build a houses, people don't have that choice. Because they have to buy the houses with the yard that were given to them, so. I don't think it's going to do any good, but yeah, I'm not really in favor of it, and I, and I made a note about this in my last, in the last meeting, we talked about this, so. I'm saying no, but I guess I'm apologizing too.
Well, that's okay, and I, so my understanding it, this, this won't apply to all the lots in the development, we've had questions about, so, I mean, it will be available to developers. But that's not necessarily the plan for every home in the.
Right, this just sets the, the minimum, I mean, they can certainly do more than that. And, you know, the ones that have already come in and are getting processed, they, they have to meet today's standard, so it's only the ones going forward that would be able to exercise the, the smaller one, so, yeah.
So it will be truly mixed, mixed sorts of lots, okay. All right, we'll have an ordinance then at the next meeting, and if there is desire to consider a first and second reading. Of that. Do we need to state that now, Lane, so, or do we do that at that meeting?
I, I tell you, in, in view of Counselor McKeel's comments, I'll prepare, I think. Two versions of the ordinance, one that would include first and second reading and an emergency clause. And if, if there's not the appetite for unanimous vote in support of that ordinance. The fallback will be a, an ordinance without the emergency clause. And splitting the first and second reading between two meetings, and, and that you can adopt by a majority vote, that doesn't require unanimous. But it also doesn't take effect as quickly, so just in, 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 hearing the conversation tonight, I. And being that I'm going to be out of town, most of the time between now and the next meeting, I'll probably. Send over both versions and leave it to Marty and Suzanne how they want to address that. You're putting the agenda together, but we may want to consider, have both of them on the agenda for council consideration.
Thank you, Lane. They're writing furiously over there. All right, we will, let's, let's, I'm, let's go ahead and get through stop signs. Maybe parking, maybe quick rest, and then we'll take a break, all right.
We can do it.
We can do this.
Piece of pie, easy as toast.
I will do my best to keep this brief. So yes, this resolution nineteen twenty-seven is a resolution allowing for the. Installation and enforcement of stop signs, specifically stop signs in. The Hoffman Estates subdivision that was new, newly built and adopted or accepted by the city. The location of these signs has been reviewed by myself and the former police chief Talon. The design engineer, traffic engineer on the. Design identified them, so. Financial implications, city pays, I mean, the, the developer pays for the installation of these signs. And then the city takes them over and, and takes over maintenance moving forward. Council, this is before council, because council adopts resolutions that allow this, so with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions, I have a proposed motion in my staff report, and then there is a. Two pages of visual with this that can help out.
Yes, Counselor McKeel.
Thank you for the visuals, that was very helpful, this looks pretty straightforward, I just would like to move that the Monmouth City Council adopt. Resolution number nineteen twenty-seven, allowing for the installation and enforcement of various stop signs, thank you.
I would second that.
There's been a motion and a second, thank you, Counselor McKeel and Counselor Obers, any comments or questions? All right, then, as this is a resolu, thanks for adjusting your glasses, they're out of the corner. Resolution number nineteen twenty-seven, we'll ask for the roll call, please, Phyllis.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Yes.
Counselor McKeel.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor Belts.
Aye.
Counselor Obers.
Find those stop signs, I say yes.
All right. Motion passes six-zero, thank you very much, we will get those approved so they can get going, so, thank you. And moving on to parking restrictions mentioned in the traffic safety commission.
That is correct, yeah, so this is resolution nineteen twenty-eight, it's a resolution to establish no parking restrictions. That is correct. Yeah. So this is resolution 1928. Uh, it's a resolution to establish, uh, no parking restrictions on Madrona Avenue, uh, east, immediately east of Pacific Avenue South. This was brought to, uh, the city, uh, by a citizen, uh, who expressed a concern and also provided, uh, uh, a, uh, potential suggestion for, for how to solve the issue. Uh, the Traffic Safety Commission, uh, took this concern, reviewed it, uh, and provided a recommendation that, uh, you have before you, which creates, uh, no parking, uh, 90 feet from the intersection on the north side of Madrona Avenue and then, uh, 30 feet on the south side, uh, of Madrona Avenue. Again, council adopts resolutions allowing for the installation and enforcement of these, uh, traffic controls. We anticipate this will, uh, cost about 350 in labor and materials and, uh, will, uh, include it if, if this is adopted in our, uh, regular curb painting, uh, maintenance that goes on this summer. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and I have a proposed motion in the packet.
Counselor Belts.
Is there a requirement to inform the residents that live there that this will be happening?
I'm not aware of a requirement to do that. I don't know if Lane can speak to that.
No, there's no requirement. I mean, in terms of legal process.
I, I will say that in the discussion, we, we tried to minimize the impact on the adjacent residential property. That was part of, uh, the Traffic Safety Commission's discussion and recommendation.
Counselor Oberst and Counselor Lopez.
If you look at the overhead, the, uh, residence number 202, um, we basically don't impact it with the, uh, the curb on the south side there. And on the north side that runs along businesses.
Business.
Um, the, the whole intent here is that this, the folks who are trying to squeeze in a left turn from Southbound 99 were sometimes confronted, there was a camper parked there for a while that was really restricting the width of that intersection. And, uh, this is just to try to make that movement a little bit easier on, on folks that left turn.
It was actually my neighbor that approached me about this and I sent her to, um, traffic safety.
There you go.
It makes complete sense. And I'm just actually pleased to say that the system can work. You can approach a counselor, address an issue, and then it can actually get to action. Yeah. This, I, I agree. This would make it much safer. In fact, for the resident living there, no one's going to end up accidentally in their front yard.
Yep.
Counselor Lopez.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I have, uh, I have, uh, two, two questions. The first of which, we have, uh, had a lot of discussion about this particular intersection. The possibility of an RRFB going in, crossing 99 and/or Z crossings or a pedestrian haven. Will, will this potentially impact the, the future, um, installation of any of those?
The decision tonight, I, I'm not aware of any impact that your decision tonight would have on, uh, that future project.
Excellent. I, I thought that was the case, but it's, uh, reassuring to, to hear that. Um, the, the other consideration with, um, with visibility at this, uh, at this specific point of the intersection, is the foliage on the south side of, uh, of Madrona as it approaches, um, as it approaches, uh, 99. I took a drive by this, um, uh, well, I drive by it often, but I took a specific drive by this the other day and, uh, looking at that. And, um, not having vehicles along that south side where the, um, no parking is, uh, slated to go will help. But there's a, like brush hedge, there, there's a number of trees there, but it's really kind of brush or, or, um, overgrown hedge that's, uh, obstructing a view, um, to the south there. Is there anything that the city can do, um, to, to remedy that, to alleviate that as a safety concern or address that as a safety concern?
Yeah, uh, Public Works will look into that. We, uh, historically, we have maintained that with the, with the recent 99 project. The, what, what used to be a, I'll just call it a storm ditch, uh, got a fancier name to it. So we'll need to work with ODOT to determine what maintenance, um, what maintenance we can do in that area. Yes. We'll look into that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I think this is a, a well thought out, um, well thought out answer to make, uh, one of the most notorious intersections in, in our town a little bit safer. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And again, that intersection is going to be a focus of, uh, or I'm gone.
What you said. And Counselor McKeel.
Uh, I, well, I, I think this, uh, too is pretty obvious. I thank you, Counselor, uh, Belts for moving this one into everybody's radar. I had that same problem myself, so I would like to make a motion. I move approval of resolution number 1928, a resolution establishing no parking restrictions on Madrona Avenue East, immediately east of Pacific Avenue South.
Second. Thank you, Counselor McKeel and Counselor Belts for the second. No additional comments. I will turn to our city recorder for the roll call, please. Counselor Oberst.
Yes.
Counselor Belts.
Yes.
Counselor Kerry.
Aye.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Yes.
Counselor McKeel.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Passes six zero. Thank you very much. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Russ.
And, um, I, at this point, I'm going to ask if we can take a bit of a break just when Janet's ready to talk about bond, general obligation bonds. Um, I, we have eight 10 on my computer, so I'm going to ask, uh, if we can do about a seven minute break, seven or eight minutes. So we can be back here about eight 17 to get started. That would be great.
Eight 15 visual right there.
Yeah, I know. You gotta go eight 15 on that. Yes, in the room, it'll be eight 15. We have a different call. I like this spot. Thank you. All right. Well, uh, see if our fellow counselors are back on camera and we'll be ready to return to the agenda. Here's one, two. Coming back. There she is. All right. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, we will move on to item number eight on our business agenda. And this is a resolution, uh, regarding issuance of the general obligation bonds. And our city finance director, Janet Shinard, will fill us in.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, councilors. Uh, I have before you a resolution that was drafted by the city's bond council. And what it does is serve to further, uh, the voters' approval of our moving ahead with the general obligation bond. And in particular, gives, um, authorization to Marty and myself as the city manager and the finance director to, uh, put all of the documentation in place that is needed for that, as well as all of the other logistics. To that end, we are, uh, already moving forward on, um, talking to our financial advisor. I have a ratings call scheduled for next week. Pricing is set to happen on around August 10th. And so things are moving quickly. So with that, um, with your approval of resolution 1929, we can continue and hopefully, uh, get, um, it all sewn up at the ballot measure rate of 19 cents per thousand dollars. It's still looking pretty good, um, to be at that level. And so we're, um, optimistic that things will go well. Uh, I'll take questions.
All right. Questions? This is a quick, 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 uh, summary of what's going on. It's a complicated process that we need to kick off and get started. Um, as mentioned in our staff report, we do have the three buckets of money. Getting this money out in the market with current interest rates is, is a wise thing. And that can be spent on a lot of the construction, pre-construction costs. So being able to do that, um, and again, taking advantage of the market as we know it today will help us get going. So other questions or comments? Counselor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, um, uh, Ms. Shinard, could you speak to, uh, to what the rates have done since we, um, since we first, uh, moved forward with this project? I know, uh, the market can be fairly volatile and anything you say now won't necessarily hold, um, when we, when we move forward. But if you could give a, a brief snapshot of where, where we stand currently and how that compares to where we were when we, um, uh, sent this out as, uh, as a bond measure to the voters.
Sure. Well, actually, um, the, within the last week or two, things have actually improved a little. We've seen rates, uh, back off even further. So, uh, there is some hope that we could do better than the 19 cents per thousand. Um, I don't want to promise that, but, um, we know that we will not exceed the 19. I don't want to promise that, but we know that we will not exceed the nineteen cents per thousand. If for some reason the markets were to not do as well, then our situation would be that we would realize less than the $3 million because we have committed to voters that we would not exceed that assessed value proposition. So keep your fingers crossed that indeed we do better than the nineteen cents, and that will allow us to, you know, get the amount of money that we need to do the project. But in short, rates haven't moved a lot, but if anything, they seem to have improved in the last week or two. But we still have, you know, another month, another six weeks really till we would close on the deal, and pricing is just over a month off.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? All right, great, thank you. There is a motion in our pocket.
I move to approve Resolution 1929 authorizing the sale of general obligation bonds and related matters.
And I would second that.
All right.
I would third.
Thank you, Counselor Belts, and thanks to Counselor Selena Soliveros, but the second Counselor Oberst. And this is a resolution. This will take a roll call. Please, Phyllis. Counselor McKeel?
Yes.
Counselor Oberst?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Selena Soliveros?
Yes.
Counselor Belts?
Aye.
Passes six zero. Six zero, thank you very much, and thank you, Janet. Know that a lot of work ahead for you, so appreciate that. We, yeah, yay, it's happening. We now have a couple of issues related to the Bird scooter operations we have discussed at length. So I think Marty's going to take this one. Marty Weiner, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Tonight, for your consideration for second reading is ordinance 1398. That's an ordinance that creates the new provisions for our stand-up scooter providers to be able to operate in Monmouth. When you had your first consideration of the ordinance, you raised a couple of discrepancies and things that we needed to clarify. So we've returned with some slight amendments to that ordinance that eliminates some duplicative language. And we had a discussion about where scooters could be parked on blocks that don't have sidewalks. And with further discussion among staff, we decided that because of for safety of pedestrians, that a five-foot clear zone would be the place where we would be asking people to not park scooters. And so, and then finally, we had a request from chariots to please ask scooter providers to not have the scooters be parked within 25 feet of a bus stop. So those are provisions that we've added into the ordinance, and we also are amending the draft administrative rules to reflect those provisions. And as I said, when we reviewed the ordinance the first time, I think there's going to be a lot of trial run happening here where once the company, Bird, comes to town and begins to operate, we'll understand better what provisions they are being met, both by the users of the scooters and also the company. So I have before you the proposed ordinance with a few amendments and a proposed motion for you. I'd welcome any questions you have.
Okay, any, anything in this revised ordinance for our second reading?
From my employer, I appreciate the change for bus stop distance. That was a huge concern that they raised, so thank you.
Madam Mayor? You have something for us?
Since this is different than what you saw in first reading, our charter requires that the changed language be read. And if I can do that real quickly, just for the record, Marty has already pointed out the accepted amendments to you. The first one is in subsection five at the bottom of page three. In the first reading version of that, there was a sentence at the beginning of that subsection that said, "A person shall not park or leave a stand-up motor-assisted scooter designated as a no parking area for stand-up motor-assisted scooters, all other." And we deleted that language, both because it was duplicative and also there was some garbled syntax in that. So that language has been deleted, and that section just begins now with the word "the." And then on the next page, under subparagraph E, I'm sorry, subparagraph D, we changed the reference to six-foot pedestrian clear zone to a five-foot pedestrian clear zone. And in subsection E, below that, we added the language, "Stand-up motor-assisted scooters may not be parked within 25 feet of a designated bus stop." So those are the substantive changes in the ordinance between first and second reading. I've just done that for the purposes of complying with the charter requirements where the ordinance changes between first and second reading.
Great, thank you very much. Questions, comments that capture everything we talked about last time?
Did.
Then Counselor Lopez?
I would like to make a motion, Madam Mayor. I move to approve ordinance 1398, adopting new provisions regulating providers of stand-up electric scooters and the operation of stand-up motor-assisted scooters, adding MCC sections 5.70.010 through 5.70.030, and amending chapter 10.05.
Second.
Thank you. Was that a second? Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez and Counselor Selena Soliveros, and...
Just a quick comment. We have a good friend who does not have a car, does not drive, lives in Dallas right now, going to be moving back over here, and when she heard about scooters, she was just thrilled.
Great.
So, yeah, thought that was a very progressive thing and it's going to make her life easier.
All right, any, see no other questions or comments? This will be an ordinance in our code, and Phyllis will take the roll call, please. Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Selena Soliveros?
Yes.
Counselor Oberst?
Yes.
Counselor McKeel?
Yes.
Counselor Belts?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Aye.
Passes six zero. Thank you all very much, and we have a related resolution regarding fees that would be collected for this. Marty?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, to accompany the ordinance that you've just adopted. We are bringing you a resolution tonight to establish the fees by resolution in two parts related to the scooter operation. One is the license fee that's referenced in the ordinance. To be able to operate in Monmouth, you'll need to seek a two-year license that costs $500, and then a renewal will be $200. And then we're proposing a five cent per ride fee. And the purpose of the per-ride fee is really to, I think what we are trying to do is understand what the potential impacts are of the program, and if there is funding for the administrative costs or enforcement costs of the operation, then we have something in place to be able to begin to get the data about what the operation looks like and also potentially mitigate those costs. So you have Resolution 1930 before you to establish those fees.
Great, thank you very much. And have we researched other jurisdictions to compare these fees?
We have. The per-ride fee comes from, there are a couple of Oregon and a couple of West Coast jurisdictions that have per-ride fees, that the spirit of it is, as I mentioned, which is, we're going to be collecting, the company will be collecting data and submitting it. And as we understand more about who's using it, and also whether we experience impacts, but they're just meant to offset those costs. So there are some other jurisdictions who do have the per-ride fee.
Any other questions for Marty about this?
Let's start, go live date.
The ordinance will be effective August 7th, right, 30 days after adoption. So I'm expecting that Bird will apply, will have their application in. I think they were hoping to open over the summer, but want to be in operation before the university starts there. So I'm expecting a license application in August, early August.
I'd give them a couple of months to get right on here.
Still be able to bring scooters down for a few music in the parks. Counselor McKeel?
I think we're ready for a motion. I move to approve Resolution Number 1930, establishing stand-up electric scooter license fees.
I second that.
I'll give that one to Counselor Carey. Thank you, Counselor McKeel, for the motion, and this would be Resolution Number 1930 on a roll call vote. Counselor Lopez?
Aye.
Counselor Oberst?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Soliveros?
Yes.
Counselor Belts?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Okay, who'd I miss? Oh, Counselor McKeel.
So easy to forget.
No, I unfortunately put John Oberst down twice.
I voted for you, girl.
No, wait a minute.
I understand that passes. Six zero, by six different people. All right, and thank you very much. That concludes our business agenda. We'll give some brief reports. I don't have much for us this evening. The, on March 20th of 2020, I signed a declaration of emergency for the city of Monmouth regarding the then unknown length of time to deal with issues resulting from the pandemic caused by the coronavirus COVID-19. And that emergency declaration allowed us to suspend certain operational things that allowed us to apply for federal funds. It allowed us to be able to really be more flexible in the way we operated because the statewide emergency declaration has ended, because we are able to continue to receive federal funds without that. This past week, I did sign an order lifting the emergency declaration, so we are no longer in a state of emergency regarding the COVID-19. But just to say that, that was a huge help in allowing us to be much more flexible and responsive to the needs of our businesses, to community members, to try and keep us all safe. And also to recognize that Oregon did meet a goal of 70% of adults vaccinated in this past week, and that is changing the look and the hopes of many regarding our ability to beat this back. And so I'd like to thank everyone for participating in that. I will acknowledge the Fourth of July. I, Chief Haynes is here. I haven't heard of any major incidents. He's shaking his head no. So I really appreciate everybody considering safety first. It was a tough decision for a lot of communities who had to ban fireworks. Conditions as seen today, we've had a couple of vegetation fires just in the last couple of days in our community. And hopefully, people were very considerate of that. It really held the potential for a lot of tragedy, and I'm glad that didn't happen. We were able to celebrate with friends, with family. There was a parade, and I appreciate the work that went into that. Paralyzed veterans of Oregon, who were the sponsors, met many of them as I prepared on parade route, and really a lovely organization to support folks that live here in our community that have given so much for our country, and to be able to celebrate them on that day was a lovely activity, and look forward to the Rotary being able to return to their event next year. So thank you for that. And boards and commissions, do we have some quick report outs from those groups? Anybody meet with their folks? Yes, Counselor Selena Soliveros.
Thank you, Mary Coons. I just want to mention Historic Commission meets tomorrow evening. Enjoy that.
Others?
Planning Commission, that meeting that we have tomorrow night has been canceled. So there is no Planning Commission meeting this week. The, I did not attend the one prior, but what they did showed up here. So they'll be back at it in another month.
I just look for break carries so often. Do you have anything?
No, Library Board meets next week.
Great.
We meet every other month.
We have this fifth week last week, right? It was kind of weird. We all got a little bit of a break having a fifth Tuesday, and so we will have many reports next time, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Marty like for her report.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. I just have three very brief items. One is a follow-on to your comment, Madam Mayor, about the Fourth of July celebration and an acknowledgement, and kudos to Phyllis Bowman, who put together a very successful Fourth of July festival. And so that was, seemed like a really great community event, so thank you to Phyllis for that. I neglected to mention in my Friday notes last week that City County Insurance Services, CIS, has awarded Monmouth their property and casualty trust insurance pool. I think folks all know that, a longevity award. And this year, that award represents 40 years of continuous service and coverage between CIS and Monmouth. And so that's our risk manager acknowledging our long partnership together. Wanted you to know that that has happened. And then finally, I think that Ms. Dufner already mentioned this, but Music in the Park starts tomorrow, July 7th. And so at 6:30 PM in Main Street Park, we're looking forward to seeing everybody at Music in the Park. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Any brief council comments this evening? Counselor Oberst?
I just wanted to tag around on the end of your comments about the state of emergency due to the pandemic, and thank you for everything you did. I kind of was Johnny, for lack of a better term. Johnny come lately on this because I didn't get involved really until January. And what you and Mayor McArdle together did in getting this community to that and finding the resources to help our businesses, help individuals who needed the help, you know, on and on. I was just glad to have you guys there doing that. You did a wonderful job with all of that. And, you know, and I'll come around to our interim manager again and say, he didn't know what he was getting into when he agreed to do you the favor of coming to Monmouth for six months that turned into 13 and a pandemic. So, you know, I'd like to thank Chad again, too, but you all really did a good job through that. And, you know, it's, one of the big changes is it's nice to see the lower half of everybody's face again this last couple of weeks. I made that comment to Marty a couple of times and other friends, and, you know, it does feel like we're coming out of the end of this. That said, those who have not gotten inoculated yet, please, yeah, I know, please consider it because the Delta variant is a thing, and I really am concerned about, you know, it seems to be particularly young people. I've had a couple of the relatives we own have COVID come through in the last month. So it's still out there, and I would really urge folks to go ahead and get these inoculations. I know there are concerns that have been raised in social media, et cetera, and I would just ask folks to look at the fact that hundreds of millions of people have gotten these shots, and the number of adverse events are minuscule. You're a lot worse off getting the disease than you are getting the shot.
But do we know who won the million dollars?
We don't.
No.
I don't.
The state lottery, we've not heard yet who the Polk County winner is for that, so. And thank you. And I will say, except for seeing the bottom half of Mr. Cooper's face, I think I agree.
Because of his beard.
Yes, this big old hunk. Other comments? Yes, Counselor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, you know, I found myself enjoying a wonderful, wonderful Fourth of July holiday weekend, long weekend. Part of that was spent in the arts and culture booth and the city booth and the festivities in the park. And part of that was spent, you know, with friends and out camping. While I was doing both. know, with friends and out camping. While I was doing both of those activities, and celebrating our nation's history and birth, it really led me to thinking, and thinking about those cultures and people who were here before us. And so I prepared a brief statement on that note. The city of Monmouth, Oregon, our great town, is located within the traditional homelands of the Lucky Mute Band of Kalapulia. Following the Willamette Valley Treaty of 1855, Kalapulia people were forcibly removed to reservations in Western Oregon. Today, the living descendants of these people are a part of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron Community and the Confederated Tribes of the Sletz Indians. Now, this statement that I just read to you is borrowed from that written by Western Oregon University. And for those of you that may not be familiar, a land acknowledgement statement is a formal statement that recognizes and respects indigenous peoples as traditional stewards of this land and the enduring relationship that exists between additional indigenous peoples and their traditional territories. Adopting and acknowledgement, land acknowledgement statement is a growing trend in many public institutions. And formal adoption of a land acknowledgement statement would be an affirmative step toward demonstrating Monmouth's goals, which include increased equity, diversity, and inclusion. And I just wanted to share these thoughts with you. I think it's wonderful to celebrate our history, but with those celebrations, we must also come to terms with, you know, the tolls that that history has taken on others. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. And Counselor McKeel?
Thank you, Counselor Lopez. Thank you for bringing that reminder. It is one of those hidden parts of our past that we just don't think about. And I know it's, as Counselor Lopez was saying, it's becoming commonplace now to start meetings with this reminder of land. And I think this would be something good that the council did at the beginning of our meetings, to remind all of us and to remind our residents of where this land comes from, as the original stewards, as Counselor Lopez said.
Thank you. We'll talk to Marty about how to incorporate that, either written or verbal comments. So, thank you. At this time, the city council will meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing two issues, performance evaluation of public officers and employees under ORS 192662I, and labor negotiations under ORS 162662D, which allows council to meet an executive session. Representatives of the news media and all designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Other members of the audience will be asked to leave the room. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of executive session, we would return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. It is not anticipated that action will be taken this evening after returning from executive session. At this time, I'll note that our representative of the press, Herb, from the Admiser, has left already. We will be retaining Marty Wine, Chief Isaiah Haynes, Phyllis Bowman will stay with us for the first part of this, and Lane Shutterly. And so others will leave the room. We'll continue after we stop this recording, and...